All by themselves.
Ready to roll?
We are.
Is everyone here? Okay, good afternoon. Mr. Gessford will not be with us today, but we do have a quorum, so we will go ahead with our meeting today in a work session to review the input that the Board has heard to date on the budget and to make any additions, deletions, or changes that the Board deems necessary to the budget. And in addition, the Board will consent to move this draft budget forward to this evening's business meeting for adoption. And then this budget will be presented to the Board of County Commissioners in a joint meeting on March 22. Dr. Wilcox, do you want to do any opening comments?
Just a couple, thank you very much. After our last meeting, I asked Chris and the Finance and the Budget Management Team to take a look at not only the testimony that was presented, but the conversations that went on between and amongst Board members at our public meeting. And I think several really pertinent points were brought up that I hope the Board will absolutely consider. One was brought up at Bester Elementary School, which I believe merits some consideration by the Board, and that is to add a guidance counselor to the already existing social work team member who's there. I think that the school certainly could use that type of support, as well as our entire guidance program, use the additional infusion of another talented individual. In addition to that, I did take a look at Hancock Middle Senior High School, particularly when you view what's taken place with our mentor, which we've recommended, excuse me, not our mentor, but our administrative intern positions that we've looked at eliminating in this budget. Having an assistant principal at Hancock Middle Senior High School makes a great deal of sense. But when I got into looking at numbers and the services provided, I was also called to look at Boonsboro Middle School, which is our second-largest middle school, and will likely have enrollments exceeding over 800 next year. And we also took out of that school an administrative intern. I think it might be time to add an assistant principal back to Boonsboro Middle. So I think the call for a counselor, the additional administrative support are absolutely ideas whose time have come, and I hope the Board will consider that. I did suggest to the Board that we could take a look at either existing lines within the budget, or we would defer to the Board's wisdom in the budget process for how we might go forward with that. And with that, I've asked Chris to make just a few very brief statements, and then we will turn the meeting back to you, Madam President, and let the Board have their conversations. And we will get this budget in shape for you to have as a public document this evening.
This evening, thank you. Mr. South?
Ready to make comments about what you're prepared to make? You've already--
Is your mic on?
I think you just have to speak into it, Chris, instead of to the side.
Get the red light snot on.
Many of the comments that I was prepared to make, you've already covered, Mrs. Brightman, but I would point out that we did provide the documents that I believe Dr. Wilcox sent out to the Board, which was the answers to the questions that had been posed last week at the budget hearing. And if anybody has any questions about those, we certainly would be glad to answer those if we were unclear in any of those responses. And we're certainly here to answer any questions that the Board may have.
Thank you, appreciate it. So we do have two hours set aside for this meeting. Again, reminding my colleagues that we had the Budget Advocacy and Review Committee report at our last meeting, plus President Becker, WCTA, delivered some questions and comments, and we have those before us to consider today. And I know we've all had time to review and ask questions of staff in the interim. So I will just open the floor to any member. Dr. Wilcox?
Ms. President, I also wanted to mention that we received from our Student Government Association and our student board member--
Oh, sorry.
--a list of recommendations as well that confirmed many of the conversations the Board was having, but also perhaps opened the conversation to several new items.
Has everyone had a chance to see those? Mrs. Greenwall sent those to us via email, I believe, last night. If anyone hasn't seen that, please say so. Okay, if everyone has the information material they need in front of them, we will proceed with discussion. Mr. Ridenhour?
No, I would concur with Dr. Wilcox. I like the idea of having a vice principal position at Hancock, and although it's a small high school, it's still one person, it's difficult for one person to do all the administrative work. And it takes some of the burden off teachers, too, having a vice principal that can help them rather quickly in disciplinary need or whatever the situation might arise. And I also concur about Boonsboro Middle. I was there. It is a large school, very dynamic student population with middle-school kids, and I believe an additional VP would be most beneficial to that group. As far as the counselor is concerned, Bester, as we know, is-- there are a lot of students who are challenged at that particular site, and having a counselor there as well as the social worker would be beneficial to them. I would leave it to the superintendent, although I might have some ideas of my own where that money could come from, but I would be more than happy to look at what the superintendent would recommend as a spot where we could pull that money, which probably would be in the neighborhood of $250,000. The last thing, in looking at what the students sent, struck me the first couple of things that they saw, because this was something that, you know, our Budget Advocacy and Review Committee recommended pulling, and I've been thinking all along that it's not enough. And personally, I'd like to see at least an additional $25,000 to go into that pot. I think the athletic--
Pot is that--
Athletic under eight, athletic field trip support, I think it's kind of a misnomer to say athletic field trip. You know, it is for athletics and associated cost. And I don't particularly want-- I think we ask a lot of our booster groups, I think they do a magnificent job providing for our athletic programs, band programs, but it's inconsistent, if you would. Hancock, with their size and their booster club, is going to have a much more difficult time raising money, say, than Boonsboro High School. So I think it would be great if we could add a little bit to that pot. And if nothing else, the additional money might be used to cut the athletic participation fee that our students are already paying, instead of putting our schools in a position where they're going to have to ask for more from our athletes and from our students. So those are three, I mean, a few things that I would like to see added at this particular time.
Would you entertain a question, Mr. Ridenhour, on that? The athletic field trip support is at $75,000. You're recommending it be increased by another 25?
Twenty-five thousand, that's the recommendation.
Okay, I've noted that, and we'll get through this entire discussion. We'll save the last 15 or 20 minutes to try to reach some consensus and then move the budget forward. Mrs. Hirschman?
I just had a question about what Mr. Ridenhour was talking about. Do we still have athletic cards that the students purchase and then can get into the games free, the home games free, or some of the--
I don't think so, Mrs. Hirschman, I don't. I remember what you were talking about.
I don't think so either, yes. And I'm wondering why we don't do that?
Because it ends up ultimately costing money. You don't make enough from the cards to justify free admission to every contest that we have. When you and I were in high school, there was much less.
Right.
And now we're looking at, you know, in some schools, a dozen athletic teams. So, you know, I don't think we would make enough off that card to justify the gate receipts that we would lose. That's just my opinion. I don't know if that's correct or not, but--
Do we have costs for all the different sports? Does, in other words, does every sport cost the students to get in?
No, no. The moneymakers that are football, basketball--
Right.
Wrestling, I think, charges. I don't think any of the outside sports do.
Volleyball is not?
Volleyball does, that's correct. Thank you, yeah.
Volleyball, so it's all the indoor sports?
Pretty much, yeah. Except, I don't believe we charge for freshman sports. It's just the varsity and junior varsity who play together anyway, so, yeah. And that was great.
It was.
But I understand the rationale. It's very difficult to justify free, not free, but that much reduced.
Yeah, much reduced.
Mrs. Greenwall?
And one thing I was going to add on is, at North High at least, if you're in good standing, which means your grades fit a certain, like, GPA, and you don't have, like, any behavioral issues, you actually get discounts into games that you have to pay for, but not counting big meats like Zonis and stuff like that. So if you do have good grades, you do get a discount, but it still is expensive.
Yeah, well, I was thinking not only about the kids, but also about some income. But I know that it costs the kids a lot to go to almost every sport that he or she wants to go to, and so, okay, thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Yes, I have a question and then a few comments. Dr. Wilcox, on the sheet I have that's one of two, I guess, is the summary of changes, number five, to maintain the technology plan. The seven computer technician positions that are proposed, are those technicians in the sense of the word that they're going to be going out and repairing, updating, or are these instructional-type positions that will be working in those schools?
They've been envisioned as technicians, people that actually work on the devices, work on the network.
Okay, thank you. I agree, I would like to see a guidance counselor added at Bester. I think there's a definite need for that. And two years ago, I tried to get the assistant principal reinstated at Hancock Middle Senior High, so I'm definitely in favor of putting that position back there. I think that is definitely warranted. And I would agree to the position at Boonsboro Middle as well. I think both of those positions are needed. I'm not, however, in favor of funding those positions from the salary pool, as was suggested in an email from one of my colleagues over the weekend. I would prefer to see those positions funded by eliminating the two central office positions that are proposed. That would be the coordinator for HR and the director position. I think those two positions just aren't warranted at this time. I think we would be better served to use our resources closer to students, and I think these three positions would certainly do that. And I'd like to see the salary pool maintained for attempts at further reducing class size, again, to make the greatest impact on our students. The other thing I'd like to see eliminated is the $20,000 proposed to be spent on the fifth-quarter fresh drink. I'd like to see that cut, and that $20,000 used to fund the three positions that we're talking about, funding the guidance counselor and the two assistant principal positions.
I just, I wanted to be sure Mrs. Williams was finished. I've tried to take notes, so let me just, to be sure I understood, you said you would like the three new positions to be paid for out of eliminating the Director of Equity and Achievement position, and the position for the Minority Recruitment and Retention.
Diversity Recruitment and Retention, Human Resources Coordinator.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
And the fifth-quarter fresh drink. Got that one?
Yep, got that one, thank you. Mrs. Hirschman?
Well, this relates to the fifth-quarter fresh energy drink. I remember that was brought up the last time, and I thought that that was going to be eliminated. So I, too, would be interested in seeing that pulled out, because apparently there aren't enough facts about its worth to go on with this at this time. Another question that I have, and I'm not sure where this falls, because I couldn't find anything, is the pay for tuition reimbursement for doctoral degrees. I know that that's not a requirement for the positions that anybody serves in, and I'm just wondering why we do that. I know with the teaching staff, you have to have either a master's or a master's equivalency in 10 years, but I don't know if there's, I couldn't find anything that indicated that you positively had to have a doctorate. So I'm wondering how we got to reimbursing for those.
Mr. South, do either of you know where that is in the budget?
That is one--
Tuition reimbursement.
--in the fixed charges.
It's on page 32 of the 41-page document.
Thirty-two?
Yes.
Okay.
Could staff explain rationale one way or the other, or?
That's the $60,000 line. Is that the line we're talking about?
As I recall, that six, there was, there was always some A&amp;S tuition reimbursement in the budget, but it was bumped up to the $60,000, as I recall, when we had our first cohort of educators who went down to the University of Maryland program. It was sort of a partnership to jump-start that program and to help bring that commitment to help get that program in Washington County at USMH.
But we don't have any requirements for doctoral degrees for--
There's not a requirement for doctoral, but the instructional folks can correct me if I'm wrong, or the HR folks, but I believe they have the continuing education requirement, just like teachers do.
And is that the equivalent of a doctoral?
I'm sorry?
Mrs. Francisco?
I don't know the history, but in the agreement, the meet-and-confer document that we have with the A&amp;S group, you can obtain, under tuition reimbursement, up to nine credits of postgraduate, I want to make sure I say that, tuition reimbursement beyond the APC, nine semester hours. So it's not an unlimited amount of tuition reimbursement.
How much are they required to have at any given time?
I think it would be dependent upon the position. I'm not, I mean, if they're getting credits to renew a certificate, it just depends on where they are in that process. But we've got--
So everyone would not necessarily need nine semester hours to renew? Is that, is that what you're saying, or?
Not necessarily in a given year. I think it would depend on where they were in their cycle of renewal. I'm looking at, yeah, it's nine for tuition reimbursement beyond the APC. I'm just looking at the A&amp;S document.
But I'm saying, what's the requirement for the number of hours?
I think it's six hours per five-year renewal period. I just renewed my certificate, and I had to have either six hours or the equivalent in professional development at the school level.
Is that before a doctorate, too?
Yeah, I think that's for anybody who's renewing their APQCS.
So anybody, okay, so it would be six hours.
I think that it was six hours at the state for me, I know.
In five years?
Yes.
Okay, so we're giving nine hours?
Up to nine.
Reimbursing nine hours instead of six, and six are required.
I think our agreement with the administrator says that we will reimburse up to nine hours. And I think part of that, and I was not here when that was done, was to encourage people to pursue their doctorate. So they tried to sweeten the renewal pot by adding additional compensation for hours beyond what one might normally take.
Okay, I think that would be one place that we may need to look, because if we're not doing that for any of the other organizations, then maybe the six hours is, which is what's required. I know that's what we give to the teachers, the required amount, if they get it in time, because I think, I don't know if it's per year, I can't remember that, but within 10 years, you had to have a master's or a master's equivalency. So I don't know exactly how many you could have each year, but that might be a place where we could look to check for funding, because I think if we require the six hours, then yes, we need to do something for that. But to assist with the last, with three more when they're not required, may be up to the person himself or herself.
The floor remains open. I am taking notes of everything, and we'll go back again at the conclusion.
I have one other question.
Yes, Mrs. Hirschman?
Okay, and this would be on page two, and it's number--
They're looking at the changes.
Yeah, this would be the reductions. And it says, it's down under miscellaneous saves, and there's no number on the side, so it's about six or eight down. Reduction in professional development supplies and food/meals. And I'm just wondering who that affects. It doesn't say the reduction for what professional development, so I'm just wondering where that is.
It would be on page 14, in professional development. And it's a combination, if you look on page 14 of lines 12 through 15, where there's a $1,000 reduction, then a $20,000 reduction in workshop supplies. If you look at it, making those reductions is really just bringing the budget closer in line with what has been spent the last couple of years.
But who, whose reduction is this? Is this the--
This is instructional, professional development.
So this would be the teachers?
And career professionals as well.
Is there a reason we did that, other than bringing it in line with what we--
Nothing other than what I just mentioned.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Fisher, you have had a go?
My first is a clarification. It's on the summary of changes. Item number four is specific large-dollar saves, and the second item down is reduction in classroom instructional programs, instructional substitutes, but then it says with benefits.
I'm sorry, what page are you on?
On the summary of changes. Changes, under number four, number four is specific large-dollar amounts.
Oh, okay.
The second line, under number four--
Have it.
Instructional substitutes with benefits. What benefits do substitutes get?
That would just be your FICA, your social security.
Oh, all right.
It's classified as a benefit.
Okay, thank you. One of the things I looked back at over the weekend was based on interview feedback from teachers, I believe as they were retiring or leaving us. And there were four items that were highlighted out of that lit-long list for us. One was additional training in technology, which-- One was additional training in technology, which obviously is happening. Continuation of the level of support provided to new teachers, and I don't think I saw any reduction in the new teacher academy or anything. More support for student behavior issues. The one guidance counselor we're talking about putting back at best or may help at best for that, but I don't know if there's anything anywhere in our budget, anything else anywhere in our budget that would do that, that could come under professional development perhaps, but I'm not sure if there's anything planned for that since we have so much to do with the new curriculum and the new technology. And then the last one was a continuation of county mentors, and I believe -- I might get confused here between mentors and lead teachers, but there were...
There were four mentor teachers, and they have been moved from the general fund...
Just to grants, right?
To grants.
But we didn't reduce them.
Jamie, are they the only people funded in that Title II? Or is there one coordinator is also funded out of there?
Okay, so we're not losing any of those. I also agree with dropping the fresh drink. I do think it would be good if we can add the three positions, guidance counselor and the two APs. However, I'm not so sure I want to do that. And fund it by dropping the two staff positions. I'd like to hear a little bit more perhaps as to the value of those two staff positions, though, before making a decision on that.
Would you like to have speak to that?
Laura, do you want to speak to how you would use those two positions, or at least the one? And Peg, do you want to speak to the achievement gap piece as well?
The coordinator for diversity recruitment and retention would be a level category three administrative position in human resources and would be directly focused on the recruitment and retention of diverse employees for Washington County Public Schools. It is a very -- you know, it's an area of emphasis and focus right now, and it's something that we want to and are paying a lot of attention to. It would help us support that effort directly because we have one person now dedicated to recruitment, and so it would enable us to really focus in on that effort, find out where we need to be to recruit staff, what relationships we need to build with universities and other institutes of higher education, and also building connections and outreach in the community with organizations here in Washington County that can help us in that effort. So there's a community outreach aspect as well. And then there's also just an aspect of support in human resources. The job description draft, as it's written now, includes generalist HR support for things like investigations, the day-to-day things that we work on in HR.
And then with the achievement gaps that we have in our student performance and in our data for graduation and those students who are on track for graduation, it's everybody's job, of course, to make sure we're monitoring that, but it's much easier if you can have a single point of focus, who's totally accountable and looking at the data. We have many people that work in teams on the data, but this person, I feel, could pull together those important members of the team that could look at how do we change processes? How do we -- what professional development do we need? How do we address what our changing gaps are? And it would be a big support to me to be able to count on somebody that could pull together the different groups based upon the data indicators to address and really come out with actionable steps for our data gaps.
Mrs. Francisco, back to the diversity position. Isn't HR down one position right now?
As a result of the budget as it's proposed right now, yes.
So that position could step in?
Yes, it's at a lower level. Mrs. Hirschman asked me about category three. That's the A&amp;S pay scale. Like, the teacher's pay scale has different lanes. The A&amp;S scale has 10 lanes. This would be in the third lane.
Mrs. Williams?
So would that then be considered a replacement and not -- is there hope that you're going to fill that vacancy in the future? And that's left in -- do you understand what I'm asking?
Yes.
Is it this for that, or we're going to maintain the position that's currently vacant and fill that later?
No, we actually looked at this position prior to making the determination to reduce the position, but when we really looked at what we needed, we thought this made the greatest sense, given the board's focus. This really is a reaction to the board's focus on diversity. It's not something that we set out to do originally. But, you know, we believe that it makes sense.
So that position is already -- the position we have is funded, what percentage of this new position?
Maybe...
Dollar-wise?
Well, the one that was cut was a higher level, so 80, 85%.
So we're coming in under... Mrs. Williams?
And we hired a person who's dedicated to recruitment last year. We instituted a new position.
Correct.
How many people would you say we recruit per year to fill positions as opposed to the number of applicants that just flow into us?
Well, with a dedicated recruiter, this year, we're approaching things a little differently, and we really are with the Diversity Day initiative, for instance. We're really reaching out to individuals as we meet people at fairs. We're really keeping those individual connections versus, like you said, just the normal applications that come in unsolicited. So I don't know if I have a number yet to tell you, but we're really working on that aspect of building those personal relationships, seeking out the people we want versus just seeing who comes to us.
But if you had to make a guess as to where the hires come from, do they come from the applications that flow in, or do they more come from the people that you go out and actively seek and recruit?
More elementary candidates come to us. More secondary candidates are garnered by us, by our work in going out to the people that we need for those hard-to-fill positions.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Fisher, questions? These were your items, so...
Right. It's a tough decision to make. I feel that we probably need someone else in HR, especially since we lost someone. However, I'd rather not see the bulk of their work devoted to just recruiting diversity. I think we've been doing a lot to improve that, including appealing to the schools that tend to graduate a lot of the teachers that would fall into those groups. And we keep coming back, and I keep hearing the same answer is, it's not that there aren't qualified people out there that need jobs, they don't want to come to Washington County because we don't offer for them the things that they can get around the big city. So I'm not so sure devoting that much of one person's time to recruiting people of diversity is going to really make that much of a change. I just think they need it, but I don't want to cut the whole position because I think HR needs somebody, since we've been -- we've cut them. In a way, if I had to make a choice between the two, I might say cut the person that's going to work on the achievement gaps because I think that's something we already somewhat do with our lead teachers, our mentors. We don't have department chairs anymore. The supervisors in each of the disciplines. But if I really have my druthers, it would come from the pool anyway, and we wouldn't be cutting those positions, and we'd still be adding the other three. My last item, and I know I asked this the other day, had to do with summer school. And the answer I got was, when there was a 33% cut somewhere on the page, was that we're actually increasing summer school this coming summer, the number of students attending. But when I keep seeing you reducing a school nurse because of summer school, you're reducing instructional programs in the summer, and elementary summer school with benefits, again, reduction. How can you have more students in the program and cut teachers and a nurse?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Summer. It's a program that he runs.
He had a great answer last time, so we assume he's going to have a great answer this time.
I hope. Well, when we were running summer school in our satellite campuses, it was actually requiring more staff, more time, which obviously increased the cost. We also had programs that were designated for those campuses, for those six campuses when we were doing the satellite. We went back to a school base where we were able to run the program a lot more efficient within the building, within the school-based building. Nursing staff then is designated to support area schools, and they kind of float and support the different schools within those zones. We ran it last year for a lot less, and we were able to reach more students.
Okay, I mean, it sounds good verbally, but I just don't see how it actually works out, but I have to believe you. I think that's all I did -- I don't know if I said that or not, I did agree with cutting the fresh energy drink.
Let me continue around. Ms. Greenwall, you haven't had a first go?
No. In concurrence of what Mrs. Fisher was just saying, I would, as well as the SGA voted on to cut or to support cutting the fifth quarter athletic drink. One other thing in line with the SGA's budget priorities, I would also support Mr. Ridenhour's suggestion to increase athletic funding for our schools.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Harding, I believe you haven't had a...
Yes, I'm -- well, I'm going to start by being the one person to defend fifth quarter. It seems like it's a futile effort right now, but I will say a few words about it. Since the BARK seems to oppose it, student government seems to oppose it, I think our partners in the association have identified it as an item for a cut. I think the writing's on the wall, but I will say a few words about it. I don't believe that this drink ever was really intended to be a way to heal injuries or repair soft tissue or anything of that sort. My son has been drinking it after every practice for almost two years now, and I think what the real benefit of it is, is when you are in an endurance sport like cross-country or track or a contact sport like football, or many of the other sports out there, I don't mean to leave anybody out, any sport out by omission. When you plan your day to be able to go and run 10 miles at 4:00 in the afternoon, you don't eat much of anything between noon and the time you go out and run. You then go run your 10 miles, and at 6:00, practice ends, and you are -- you want something to eat, let's put it that way. And the temptation is then for these athletes to go and find the first thing they can get their hands on, which often is something that they probably -- is probably not the most nutritious thing for them to eat. And by handing them something that is full of nutrients, that satisfies that immediate hunger, helps maintain their nutrition in a way that they don't if they go and eat a bag of whatever chip is in the vending machine. So I know a number of student athletes who will tell you how beneficial they think that opportunity is for them. Right now, it's offered at a number of schools for purchase, meaning that as a family, you can purchase it for your student athlete for the entire athletic season at a cost of $75, $80 per season. The consequence of that is, right now, the families that can afford the $55 athletic fee plus the $75 cost of that drink are the ones who get it. Those who can't afford it don't get it, and often end up at the vending machine or eating something else. So as someone who has drank some of that after I've done my workouts, I think it achieves what it's advertised for, which is, and I don't mean all the research, what I mean is it gives you an immediate source of nutrition after you've burned 1,500, 1,700, 2,000 calories in an after-school athletic practice. So that's why I'm going to defend it. I understand that the writing's on the wall, it's probably going to be taken out, but with all the criticism it's gotten, I thought it was important for me to at least share with my colleagues and anybody else who's willing to listen, just the anecdotal evidence from our house and from what I've seen from the student athletes who drink it after a So that's, as Forrest Gump says, that's all I've got to say about that. Now, I'd like to take a little bit of a step back from the whole budget. I mean, my hope is that through this process, reflecting on the vote that we had two weeks ago, which was clearly a four to three vote, it was a divided board about whether to support this budget, whether we can find a way that we can grow the consensus and support for what we put in the final budget document. There's some things that I'd like to see in here that are in here that I like and that I'd like to keep, but honestly, if it will help grow the consensus on the board to support the final document, I can let them go. I mean, the energy drink's one of them. And I guess there were a couple of broad areas where there was real disagreement. The first was -- well, the second areas were on the two positions that were added. And I think clearly there's some division here still on that. That's one of those things where, you know, if we can build the consensus to get a broader support for the budget by taking those positions out, I'm willing to go there. But there was another area where there was broad disagreement as well, and that was on the question of asking the commissioners for money above maintenance of effort. I think Mr. Gessford made it clear, he's not here, but made it clear during the discussion that he seems to be philosophically opposed to asking for money above maintenance of effort because that means we're not living within our means. And that's fine. But that's -- the maintenance of effort question, to me, seems to be kind of fundamental to determining whether we can build a broader consensus of support. If there are other members who are just philosophically opposed to asking for funds above maintenance of effort, I think it's important to let everybody know that so that we really know what options we have as we move forward. Go ahead, Mrs. Fisher.
I don't like using the term asking for money above maintenance of effort. I'd rather approach it as replacing the funds that were -- replacing the funds that we've had to put out for the things that the commissioners used to pay for. And that's exactly what the total comes to now, correct?
Exactly what the total comes to now, right.
I have no problem with asking them to take those things back.
And I will just, could I add as well?
Yeah, I'm hopeful that this can be a discussion, yeah.
And when I was at MAB, Legislative Committee, on Monday morning, we do sort of this round-the-room conversation, and there were 14 school districts in the state represented that morning. And I asked everyone in the room, I said, would you please, with a show of hands, tell me how many of your districts asked for money of your funding agencies above maintenance of effort? Every hand went up, and that was 14 that day. Every -- so what we're suggesting in this budget is something that boards across the state have been doing for years. I think this is the first time this board has asked in seven years. So I just wanted to share that, Dr. Harding, so you're welcome to continue. I didn't want to...
I just, I said my reasons two weeks ago, but I also saw this article, which was in the Herald Mail. Get a good shot of that, Julie, of me holding up your newspaper. It was an article on Delegate Parrott's initiative to return state highway funds to the counties. And just a couple of quotes from the heads of Mako about whether they're asking for money or whether their request is unreasonable. It says, "This is a restoration. We just want to get back to the way it was for decades. The previous formula worked great until the recession. We're now in the seventh year." And that's the way I sort of feel about our funds, the funds used for items that were not being provided, that we've been asked to pick up. We're just asking for a restoration of the way things were. And if the county can't or won't provide them, that's, that's their decision to make, but I don't, I don't have a problem with asking for it. But again, I think if, if there are members who do have just a fundamental disagreement with asking the commissioners to restore that funding, I think it would be helpful to know because I, as I said, I'm willing to let go of some of the things that I would like to keep in the budget if it means we can build a broader consensus to get more members to support the final product. But if, if we can't get past the maintenance of effort question, then, then I'm not, then I guess that's not something that we can achieve.
Mrs. Hirschman?
Well, first of all, I would like to address your comments about asking the county commissioners because every board that I've spoken with at MABE has said that their relationships with the county commissioners, the relationships are deplorable, that they don't get along with them, they don't get funding, they don't get, they, it's a terrible relationship. We, on the other hand, had maintained a very good relationship with them. I'm not sure where it is now, but I think part of that was because we took the responsibility for what we said we needed. And if you go back into your budget and you can find monies that can be dropped, then you don't have the most succinct budget that you can have. And since we've done that nearly every year, I think that before we consider, I'm not totally against asking the county commissioners for increased money. What I'm totally against is asking them for money when we have money. So I would need to look at, which I have, many of the things, which included the two positions that I think we voted against the last time, which were the Achievement Gap Specialist and Diversity Coordinator, because again, we're at the top, we're at the top of the heap, and we are adding to the top. And that's one of the things that teachers and ESPs have responded to negatively every time. If we are going to add positions, it should be with teachers and/or guidance counselors. I know that North and South High's guidance counselors, it's ridiculous to think that a guidance counselor for the entire senior class, one guidance counselor, and then you have a guidance counselor at maybe an elementary school, which consists of maybe, what, 200 kids or whatever. So I, I think we need to divvy out the guidance counselor positions based on the number of students that are being served, so that everyone is served at least fairly, if not completely equally. So I, before I can vote to support this budget, I have to be sure that we will not go back in a week and find a million dollars somewhere. That really goes against my grain. So, and that we have not hired higher positions and allowed teachers and ESPs and the people who are working on the front line with the kids to have to overwork because there are not enough of them. And I know that that's happening many places. That's the reason we are losing so many teachers, and that's the reason, if you've read any articles lately, you will notice that people are shying away from even going into teaching. And it isn't because they don't like the kids, and it isn't because they don't like teaching, it's because of all the other junk that comes with it. So I think we need to support our teachers and our staff before we do anything else. And to put two positions in the higher level, I think, is, is using money foolishly.
Mr. Ridenhour?
Mrs. Hirschman, this is where we philosophically differ.
I know.
There's this notion, from what you've said, that somehow the people who work in this building, our administrators, our coordinators, they're not important.
Please don't, don't put words in my mouth.
No, 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 please, let me finish.
Do not put words in my mouth. I never said that. I never indicated it. I'm sorry, but I'm not going to be attacked.
I didn't see this as an attack. I'm telling you philosophically, we disagree.
Well, don't say what my philosophy is. You don't know what it is. You don't know my philosophy.
No, 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 I'm not, Chris, by the way, if we took every person out of this building, how much money would we save? How much money would, does it take for the people that work in this building? I mean, it's probably somewhere in the budget. Administrators, take every administrator.
I know I...
This is just a ballpark, but I remember looking at last year, if we just eliminated all administration, all payroll, all accounting, all HR, it's only, it's like $6 million.
Thank you.
All benefits.
That's everything for the whole department.
And then we couldn't function, we couldn't function as an organization.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's my point.
That, that's not including like instructional supervisors, but what we classify as administration for when we do budget adjustments and other things.
Mr. Ridenhour, you wanted to complete your thoughts?
No, I mean, it's no use, I'm not going to be able to finish it, so thank you anyway.
If we're staying on this subject for a moment longer, Dr. Harding, just to add, a neighbor to our east, directly to our east, Carroll County, I think would be considered one of the most fiscally conservative counties in the state. They have a pretty good relationship between their county commissioners and their Board of Ed, particularly after the last election. They're working very collaboratively. Carroll County Board of Ed is asking for $9 million above maintenance of effort. Our neighbors to the south, Frederick County, they have a very good working relationship at this point with their council and their county administrator. They're asking for $24 million above maintenance of effort. So again, this is a conversation that local school districts and the funding agent, local funding agencies are having all the time. It doesn't have to be adversarial, it doesn't have to be a this or that, it's a valid conversation when Board of Ed members are tasked with advocating for what is best for the students and the employees of the organization. It's a valuable conversation to have. We don't know what the outcome will be, but it's certainly something that I would think our employees would stand with the board, and to have that as a collective conversation. So, but again, I do agree with Dr. Harding's. It really is difficult to take a budget forward with a 4-3 vote. Mrs. Williams?
Thinking back to the report that we've received from the Budget and Review Committee, what I heard them say was that while things are improving economically in the county, we aren't where we need to be yet. And maybe someday in the future, things will be back to the way they once were, and it wouldn't be such a hardship for the county to take back the things, like the nurses. But obviously, we're not there. We've been able to fund these things, and still, we have been able to put money into a fund balance that has accumulated, that has allowed us to do some other things, like renovating, purchasing and renovating this building. I want to be able to go to the county commissioners with a budget that says to them, this is what we need to educate our students. And when someone says to me, this is a bare bones budget, I trust that. But then when we go back and we find money in the budget that we weren't able to find before, then that makes me wonder how bare bones it was. On a personal note, I can tell you with regard to the position of director of, what are we calling it? Equity and something, what is it?
The Achievement Specialist?
Just on a personal note, when I retired from the Board of Ed, I was hired as a consultant to work for the Maryland State Department of Education under the Race to the Top Grant. And for two years, I was part of review teams that went into schools in PG County and Baltimore City. These were schools that had never, under No Child Left Behind, made AYP. And they were receiving huge grants. And these teams, made up of retired administrators, central office administrators, building-level administrators, made recommendations to the schools and to the school systems. I don't recall one school or school system ever receiving the recommendation, put more people at the central office in positions that will make these kinds of decisions. Put people on the front lines? Yes. So that's where I'm coming from, on a personal note, just bringing my personal experience to this. When I hear you say that there are other counties who are making requests above MOE to their commissioners, I have no issue with that, but perhaps we should maybe, along with that request, suggest to the commissioners what they can cut from their budget in order to be able to give us more. Do they give less to the police? Do they give less to the fire department? Do they not pave our roads? You know, it's not an easy thing. And I'm here to advocate for students, yes, but I want to make sure that I'm being fiscally responsible to the taxpayers of Washington County, and that the ask that we're making on behalf of our students is reasonable. So I hope that answers your question, Dr. Harding's. That's where I am. Am I physically, or physically, philosophically opposed to asking for more money? No. Do I want to make sure that the money I'm asking for is money that is indeed needed? Yes.
I appreciate that. It sounds like you've made it clear where you are. I mean, I'm just trying to build a broader consensus here, and maybe that's a fool's errand. I don't know. I'd like to think that, that we could. As I said, I respect your experience and the perspective that you bring to that specialist position, and, you know, I'd certainly be willing to, to vote to let it go if I, if I felt like that could help, again, broaden the consensus that we have on supporting the budget, but it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't sound like it. So I'm a little lost as to where to go. I mean, I think if, on the one hand, I guess it's fair to say, if we're going to ask for additional funds for the commissioners, we should tell them where we think they should get the money. I think it's also fair, though, to say that if you won't support getting, asking the commissioners for the additional revenue, how do you balance this document and cut $5 million in order to bring it into balance? And that's, that's probably, that might be something that we're all going to have to figure out in a few weeks or months, but...
Mrs. Fisher had a comment?
We...
I'm sorry, are you... I, I don't know quite where to start. When I first got on the board, 2002, I was very naive about the amount of work that occurred at Central Office. I had no idea about all the work that was required because of federal laws and state laws and reports that had to be filed, and how much legal work there was to be done, and so on. I've often called here at 7:30, 8:00 at night and gotten an answer from somebody working here that late or being here at 7:00 in the morning working. Quite frankly, I just had no idea while I was teaching of what went on at Central Office and what work was to be done here. On the other hand, from some comments made by people and a couple of letters and emails that we've received over the last maybe two years or so, I'm, I'm a bit concerned about teachers, especially young teachers, who, if they got into the business of teaching thinking this was a nine-to-five job, they must have had blinders on or something, because I fully understood that it wasn't a nine-to-five job when I got on the board. But yet, I'm reading letters of teachers who are saying, I work all day, and then I come home at night and work for another hour and a half, two hours. An hour and a half, two hours was nothing to me when I worked. It was four hours every night and all day on Sunday, but I knew that when I went into the profession. Yes, teaching may be different. I think it's different because kids are different right now. But I think there's too many teachers out there who think this is a nine-to-five job and don't think they should ever have to take anything home to do in the between, based on when their school opens and closes, 8:00 in the morning and 4:00 in the afternoon, they should be totally finished. I, I've just, I'm getting that impression from the letters and comments that I'm, I'm receiving. I'm hoping that is the minority that are doing that. But to say or imply that the staff here at the board is expendable, and they're expendable because we need to put more teachers in the classroom, I agree, it'd be great to have, every teacher have 15 kids. It's not going to happen.
Who said that? Who said they were expendable? It only came out of your mouth.
Lying.
Not my, no, it was not. You may be inferring it on your own, but I didn't imply it.
Mrs. Fisher has the floor.
I'm sorry that we're doing a discussion. I realize that some of us have to raise our hands.
Mrs. Fisher, would you like to complete your comments?
I'm finished. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, you're welcome. Mrs. Williams?
Yes, I have a question, and maybe we can discuss this a little bit. I've lost the page, it's OPEB. Mr. Sissler, if you could help me out, I had it here, and then I let it flip shut. We're increasing OPEB contribution to 4,000, from 4 million. Oh, what it'd only be.
We're adding a million.
Thousands. So we're upping it from 3 million to 4 million. Could we not eliminate that increase and put 1 million from the fund balance towards OPEB this year?
You could do that.
And we, I guess I'm looking for discussion as to why that wouldn't be a good thing to do.
Well, this is just my opinion, so then you're going to have to ask, let me make sure this is on, Jamie.
Can I take it first? If you don't, and I'd like to hear, my thought process is, if we put it in now, it's in. In other words, it's going to be a recurring cost, it's going to be a recurring expense. So consequently, each year, we would be putting that additional money into our OPEB account, which helps us lower the gap. It's kind of like adding money to a, to a, to a mortgage, you're paying it each year, each month or each year. It lowers what your ultimate payout, you know, the number of years that you're going to have to continue to, to pay that much. You know, it, I won't live to see OPEB paid off, I don't believe, Chris. How many years?
20.
To get us back to 20 years or something?
The requirement was to fully fund your liability within...
The requirement was to fully fund your liability within 30 years.
Yeah.
We're in year eight right now. We have about $40 million, a little over $40 million funded at this time. Our total liability is slightly over $200 million. So if you just kind of do the math on a straight line basis, even on a straight line basis without any compounding, you see we're not going to get there at the level we are contributing at this particular point.
That's, and, you know, it's, is that something, might be something we want to take out, I agree, but I'm not necessarily in favor of taking it out of fund balance because, you know, it's a recurring cost and it's something that we should plan for ultimately over a period of time. That's my opinion, period. Nobody else's, I don't know what, Clayton take it, but it would, it's just, to me, it makes sense to have it in the budget if we can afford it because it, you know, it's there as maintenance of effort. It's already there and would be there next year. That's all. That's my opinion.
But if we could afford to take it out of the fund balance?
Personally, I think there's some other places that we can save money by, you know, using the fund balance, but I want to get through this before I'd even recommend something like that, so.
Dr. Wilcox, your work.
Thank you.
Yep.
Well, the reason I wouldn't recommend, you certainly can do it. You certainly can take, you could take all of our fund balance if you wanted to and apply it to OPEB. For those people who might watch later, OPEB is Other Post-Employment Related Benefits. I think I did it close to right. But at some point, our trying to eradicate the deficit, the structural deficit with our OPEB required contribution where we are today, has to become a function of the general fund budget. It just does. Because if you don't budget for it, you'll never get there. And even if we started this process of kicking a million dollars in here, 2 million dollars there, another million dollars down the road when we had it, that's no plan to actually get there. And quite honestly, it's inefficient to get there. I mean, we're going to have to, and I think that's why I was pretty adamant with Chris and the team, because they actually talked to me about using some fund balance for it early on, as that we really need to take a look at this. The other thing is, is that at the time we started to build the budget, while we had thought carefully about what we might be asking the county to do outside of traditional maintenance of effort, we recognized that if the county doesn't do that, then we're going to have to go back and cut the budget. And by putting a million dollars into the fund balance, or into OPEB, that's an irrevocable trust. You can't get it back out. And so whether it's this year or next year down the road with enrollments flat, we're probably going to have some real challenges ahead of us. That's why I wouldn't recommend it, Mrs. Williams, but certainly you can do it if the Board chooses to do it.
Dr. Harding's?
One more?
Yes, absolutely.
Chris, when is the, it's a fund balance related question. When is the opportunity for us to pay off the lease on the Barbara Ingram School?
We could pay off the Barbara Ingram School at any time. There are some significant penalties, though. If you wait until the call date, which is November of 2017, the call date on the bonds, you only pay a 2% penalty on the outstanding balance anytime after that call date. Before that call date, you have to set up what's called a defeasance and essentially prepay everything between the date that you decide to pay off the bonds up to the call date. That probably would, and given the fact that right now, we're probably, what, 16, 17 months away from November of 2017, we would probably be looking at well over a half a million dollars just for the defeasance and then probably about 110,000 to 112,000 of penalty, of 2% penalty.
So approximately 600, 600 and change total, the penalty plus the...
Yeah, we would have to get a financial actuary to actually do that calculation, Mr. Rodner, but just a quick, you know, thumb in the air, looks like it would be between 600 and three quarters of a million dollars, yes.
And what do we pay per year?
What do we pay per year?
634.
634 in payments, 52,000 and some change per month.
Do we pay, we would, if we would do it right at this moment, it would cost us approximately one year's penalty. Understand what I'm saying, you know, that...
If, if, if our quick and dirty calculation of what the defeasance would be is right.
Yeah.
And I will, I'm not sure we have the expertise here to come down to the...
No, I'm not asking for that.
To within, you know, a couple of dollars of it. I think, I think we would need, before we consider something like that, we would need to get an official calculation from somebody who does that as a living.
Dr. Harding's?
Go ahead. What is, what is the balance approximately?
Right now, it's approximately, I believe it's about five, hang on a minute, I've got it right here. Right now, it is almost 5,707.
5,700,000?
Yes, sir.
And how much, how much principal do we pay down in a year, approximately?
About 300, about, looks like right now, we're at the clip we're running right now. Of course, it changes obviously because of the descending balance, but looks like we're paying about 360,000 a year in principal.
About 360K a year, 300,000 in interest, I guess. Yeah, so, yeah, so over, between now and November, another way to look at it is between now and November 2017, we're going to pay approximately $300,000 in, well, probably more like 400, 450,000 in interest if we don't pay it off before then, right?
That's, that's probably right, yes.
Okay, so I'm going to suggest then that, because between the fact that we're going to pay that much in interest anyway, the penalty would be, let's say it's 750,000. And we have, plus there's the, well, I won't go into that. I'm just sorry, I'm just thinking through the, through the numbers here. And we have already 634,000, or is it 24? I can never remember.
634.
634,000 in this document to pay the lease next year. If we took the principal amount, the 5.7 that we would still owe and the 634 that's already budgeted, we're almost, I mean, that is almost enough to pay whatever the penalty would be. And it's money that we're going to spend next year on the lease anyway. So my thought is, why not take 7 point, or 5.7 million dollars from the fund balance, put it into this budget as a revenue line, and also put it on the expense line in capital outlay, and then have in the budget the amount that we need to pay off the lease in FY '17? It sounds like it's a, that we would be, there's a few benefits. I mean, it sounds like it's essentially dollar neutral, since the additional year of lease payments is almost exactly what the amount is, or approximately what the amount is of what the penalty would be for paying it off early. I think it would also make very, I mean, we all know that the fund balance has been a big subject of discussion. The commissioners seem to want us to spend down the fund balance. This seems to be an efficient and practical way to do it, as it will save us money certainly over the next 10 years. It gives us the benefit of putting that transaction in our budget document, which we've had people ask us to do. So I think it makes a lot of sense. So I would like to suggest that and see if there's consensus on that before we finish today.
I added that to the list, Dr. Harding's.
Yes. What is the amount currently in the fund balance, please?
Undesignated.
The, the undesignated fund balance is approximately 8.5 million. There is about, about 300,000 in committed.
300,000 in what, Chris? I see Joy's neck stretching.
About 3 million in committed.
Thousand and millions in committed.
About 3 million in committed, two and a half for the, still committed for the hub, and I think it's 680,000 for the private-public partnerships, a little over 3 million in total.
And what I would suggest too, and now's not the time because it's not a budget item, but, you know, there's so much new excitement now about downtown and about the county commissioner's vision for downtown, that I think at some point, we ought to designate another 1.5 to bring our, our total commitment up to the 4 million that we'd been talking about for years for a downtown project. But that's, that's an action for another day.
I just have one more, one more question.
Yes.
The 634,000 per year is for the lease on this spot. Do you have the figures on the what we're paying rental space, what we're paying to Grand Piano and Bridge for Life, and what else do we know?
It's around 100 to 125,000 a year. I don't have the exact number, but I know it's right around there. That includes parking. I think we pay, we pay for parking, too, so we wouldn't be able to eliminate that, but...
Mrs. Fisher.
Is there enough difference between the 2% penalty and the penalty we'd pay if we pay it off now to wait until November 17, or, yeah, November 2017 to pay it off?
Essentially, what, as I understand the defeasance of how that would be built, you're essentially paying a 2% premium the whole way along, but you would be paying, you would have to fund the defeasance upfront.
So, Chris, would the simple math be that if you wait till November of 2017, you save about a half million dollars in, I don't know the word, defeasance?
Ephesence.
Okay, so you'd spend 632,000 to save 500,000.
Right.
That's the simple math.
How much interest do we get on what's in the fund balance?
She'd have to speak.
How much interest a year do we get on what's in the fund, the amount in the fund balance?
We're not getting much because everything we, everything we've got it in has to be, by Maryland law, has to be either collateralized or fully insured, so we're getting...
Like half a percentage.
Pretty much under 1%. Anything over, over 1% is being called.
Floor is still open for general conversation. I've added that to the list, Dr. Harding's suggestion to the list that we'll look at. I'd like to say another 15 minutes, maybe, of open discussion, and then we'll start going over the list. That's the will of the Board. Mrs. Harshman.
I just have a comment, and that is that so that no misinformation goes out to the county based on the two Board members who think that they can interpret my intentions, I would like to state emphatically that I have no problem with any position currently at the Board, but I do also have a philosophical position that is geared toward producing quality education for our children. And above and beyond anything else, my concern is for the children. So let me be very clear about that, and they come first.
Looking for other general budget discussion?
Real quickly, no, no, just to dovetail on Dr. Harding's recommendation, I want to go on record as saying I emphatically, very strongly feel that that is a wise course of action, utilizing, and particularly in addressing it in the manner that he has recommended. I think, you know, that that makes a lot of sense for all of us. But I do, I think it's interesting, you know, and please, Mrs. Williams, I want, it's not directed individually, it's just a, again, I guess we differ on things, and that's, and there's nothing wrong with that. We have, but right now, a $266 million budget. And I hear many times, people say, well, you know, I get upset when I see a million dollars, we find a million dollars somewhere in the budget. $1 million out of a $266 million budget comes out to .0037759 as a number. I mean, that's a very small portion of a budget of this magnitude. And if you, I think for, for the general public, because they don't operate with those kinds of numbers, if you put it into the perspective of a family making $50,000, that percentage amounts to $185 a year. So if we dump, let's say, for example, that we come out, finish the year with a $1 million surplus, you know, to someone making $50,000, that's $185 of theirs. And, you know, can you imagine if you're budgeting for $50,000 job and you get within $185 at the end of the year? You know, you're going to be pretty happy that you didn't go over, that you came in under that. You know, where we have problems is if we come over a million, 100, a million dollars over that. Then, then it's just a different perspective. I think we have to look at it in that way and say, okay, let's, and let's tell the public, this is what, what the amount is. It's less than 1% of our budget. A million dollars is less than one, well, less than one half of 1% of our budget. So, you know, I do not get as scared or, you know, crazy when I, when I see a million dollar budget adjustment during the course of the year based on the fact that we have such a huge budget. And I don't think that there's any malfeasance if we have to move money around during the course of a year on a budget of this magnitude. So, and the other thing is, I do not think we have a terrible relationship with the county commissioners. We went to them last year and asked them to pick up, I don't know if it upset them, but we asked them to pick up crossing guards, the nurses and a couple of other things, things that they had handled in the past. And, and we did that based on the fact that they were in a better position than they had been during the, during the recession. And we did not at any point complain when they asked us to pick those things up. We were in a better position, believe it or not, in some ways during the recession than we are now. Because at that point... Because at that point in time, surprisingly, we were getting more money from the state because our economy in Washington, Kansas, is in such terrible shape. So we were getting more money. We were in a better position to absorb those costs. Now we're in a position that it's a little more difficult for us to fit those things in, so we're asking for that extra money. So, but I don't think that means that there's a, in any way, you know, a terrible relationship with the county commissioners. We just differ.
You said that.
So, and there's nothing wrong with that. It happens.
Okay, about six more minutes, and then we'll wrap up. Mrs. Harshman.
Since I'm the only one who mentioned the relationship with the county commissioners, I would like to state that under no conditions did I say terrible. I said it has been, the congeniality has been reduced. I did not say terrible. The other counties have told me at almost every MAVE meeting that their relationships with their county commissioners is terrible. So that's what I was alluding to when I said terrible. I don't know where anybody got the idea that our county commissioners have, the relationship's been terrible, but I haven't seen it, though I do know that it's not what it started out to be. So I'd just like that to be clear.
Dr. Harding's.
One question. If the board were to place the funds from the fund balance into the budget to pay off the Barbara Ingram lease, I assume that the actual initiation of that payment and the paying off of the lease would require another vote of the board?
I would assume so. I don't think that budgeting would be tantamount to approval of the action.
Okay, so that by putting the money in the budget and also putting it on an expense line, we're essentially holding the place so that the board, should it choose to next year, has the resources dedicated and can pay the lease. But if the board should choose not to for some reason, it could also make that choice, in which case the money would just then flow through to the end of the fiscal year.
That is correct. And my understanding about having looked over the loan documents, we would need to give at least a 45-day notice to the lender of our intent.
Great. So this isn't a vote to pay it off, it's a vote to dedicate the resources that would be used to pay it off. The board would have to take a separate vote to actually do the paying off. Great, thank you, Chris.
Thank you for that clarification. Everyone understands? Okay. All right, we have a list here. I think I'm looking at about nine items. Remember, this is a work session, so we're not really voting on this. We're just seeing if we have a general agreement, and that would give staff time enough to make those adjustments in the document. So when we go to our business meeting this evening, the numbers would balance, and we would be voting on a balanced budget. So, and I assume if I missed something, I'm sure someone will let me know, but starting at the top, the first suggestion was to add a guidance counselor at Bester Elementary. As I listened around, I heard about three people showing support for that. I would support that myself. If I have some nodding of heads or smiles or something in that direction, looks like we're go there. The next one was to add an assistant principal position back at Hancock Middle Senior High School. I see a sort of, some, looks like we're there. The same action for Boonsborough Middle School. I'm seeing some nods. All right. There was a request, okay, to add 25,000 to the athletic field trip support. It is now at 75,000. Adding 25 takes it up to 100,000. What do I see on that one?
Doesn't look like it's got it.
You may.
Mr. Redd now, were you, in this suggestion, were you hoping for the money to go to athletic field trips or for just equipment, like uniforms, stuff like that?
It would be divvied out to the schools, I think.
Mrs. Harshman.
Chris, is that listed as field trip?
That's under, it's on the first page, summary of charges.
What we currently have is listed as field trips. Sounds like this suggestion, then, would belong, if we add 25,000, would belong more with our interscholastic athletic support, which is on page nine. Line 80.
We have 75,000.
209,000 there.
And that's for everything.
209,000 there now.
Well, there's 200.
Oh, 209,000.
That is divvied out to the schools. But over the past couple of years, that amount has been eaten into because the schools have owed back to the Transportation Department monies for athletic trips when they go to play games and so forth.
So then, this would be for the trips? Is that what?
The 209,000 goes to cover everything from officials to supplies, materials that the athletic gives. So what Mr. South is saying is, in the past few years, they really only had about $130,000 to spend for all that, because they were paying $70,000 back to the Transportation Department for trips to games and events, which we've now added 75 to make them whole, so now they'll get their 209 back, and what I think Mr. Redd now is saying, but even that number is insufficient, so he's adding 25,000 to that number.
So essentially, that 209 would go up to 309.
Well, right now, the way the budget's, the current FY '16 budget is 209,000, and this line has been proposed already as part of increasing all allocations 10%. It's going up to 230, so this would make it 255. Just, I just wanted to clarify.
What I saw was a split on this one, so I would suggest it not move forward from the work session, but there is an opportunity, because we're down one board member, there is an opportunity this evening to bring that forward as an amendment, if a board member chooses to do so. Okay, there was some discussion on the computer technician positions, the seven FTEs. I have it marked down. I think, Mrs. Williams, that was your question. Was there some action as part of that question?
It was just a clarification question, just as to what the role was going to be.
I had it marked down. So shifting to, and I'll take them separately, the two positions, the one FTE, Director of Equity and Achievement. There was discussion, again, whether to keep that in or remove it. So the question would be, do you want it removed? Yes. So again, we are split on that one. We are down one board member, so that would need to move forward to the evening if that change is to be brought forward. And the other position was the minority recruitment and retention, diversity recruitment and retention position. That is still here in this summary. Do you want to remove it? So that is staying in there at this point. Down to the, sorry, Dr. Harding's, the fifth quarter fresh energy drink is in here. As would we like it, where the question is to remove it.
Yes.
Removing the fifth quarter fresh energy.
Is that something that could be put in a vending machine? For the kids to get themselves, instead of chips?
Well, I think the point is, some families can pay for it, and some families can't afford it, and this was to help the families who can't afford it and would not necessarily have access to it.
Is that something boosters could pick up, perhaps?
Again, the question before us right now, and I don't know if that's been discussed out in the schools or not, is Mr. Akers, is he aware of?
No, I don't think it has. I've probably been more aware than.
Oh, I would just add, it is a local vendor and a local product from local cows. Just thought I'd throw that out there. Little humor.
They can spend a dollar on a bag of chips, they can spend a dollar on a strink. Now, I have no idea what it costs, and not have to spend $80 at one time, cough it up, if we can put it in a vending machine somewhere.
Okay, the question is, are we eliminating? It is in this document at this point.
Yes, eliminate.
We are eliminating it?
Yes.
It looks like we have a majority to eliminate. Okay. The other question was tuition reimbursement for ANS. Right now, I think the question, Mrs. Harshman, I believe the line item was 60,000, and the question was that, right now, there's six hours required, and we have in the budget the 60,000 covers up to nine hours. So the question, Mrs. Harshman, was, do you want to eliminate it completely, or do you want to take it down to six hours only?
Well, I think...
You're the one that brought it up.
I think the six hours would be a reasonable amount, since that's what we do with the other organizations.
Can I ask a question, though? Isn't that in the meet and confer agreement, the nine hours?
It is in the agreement, so if you vote to defund it, I think, in essence, we've created...
We violate the agreement.
We violate the agreement, but that doesn't mean that because it's meet and confer, I couldn't go back and say to them, we weren't going to honor it. But that's not really the way we've operated in the past.
I think six hours, which is what's required, is what we do with everyone else. So that was my reason for saying that.
Okay, are you asking, under the circumstances of it being part of a meet and confer, you're still requesting your colleagues to take action on this?
Yes. Since we're looking for money, yes.
Clarification, are we just talking about reducing it by one-third, then, the amount?
But it's in the meet and confer, it says up to nine.
That's correct.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, Dr., excuse me, Mr. Redd now.
That would be interesting.
Yeah, there you go.
What is, what's, the contract provides for us to provide, contract provides, that we give up to six hours per year? Or how is that? What's, do you remember off the top of your head?
There's not really a correlation between the two things. The requirement to renew an advanced professional certificate is to earn six credits within a five-year period. But like, for example, the teacher contract or the ANS meet and confer agreement, both give annual allotments for up to six or nine credit hours a year. So in a five-year period, it would actually be, you know, 30 hours or more, whether you're a teacher or an administrator. It's not meant to just help meet the minimum requirement of the certificate, it's really meant to help, say, a teacher get that master's degree, say, in a normal three-to-five-year period. They would still have to, even after they've done that, their APA renewal would continue every five years after that. So they would still, you know, just like Dr. Wilcox said, he just renewed his, I just received paperwork on mine. I'm kind of in the process of finishing up a doctorate, but I'm still looking, I'll be finished that, but I'm still going to have to do another six hours of something over the next five years, regardless of whatever kind of degree I hold. So the two things aren't really, you know, directly connected. I mean, obviously, when a teacher is first starting on their master's degree, they can use those hours to meet that requirement, but most people tend to finish that master's degree within a five-year period, and so they would continue to have to get six renewal credits every five years, even after getting their master's.
And isn't, on the pay scale, Chris, it's master's, master's degree or advanced professional certificate, the next step for the next grade for a teacher's is master's plus 30 or a doctorate, correct? Okay. Plus 30, plus 60, that's correct, yeah. Okay. Or 60 would be the, 60, the master's plus 60 or a doctorate are in the same category. No? Doctorate is another one, there's, so from the master's degree, you got master's plus 30, next step, master's plus 60, and then doctors, okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Wait a minute.
Mrs. Harshman.
So the requirement for the teachers is to have the master's or the master's equivalency in 10 years, okay? The, then after that, they still have classes that they have to take. So for administration, they have six credits that they have to take. They do not have to have a doctorate, correct?
Correct, there's no requirement for a doctorate.
So in five years, they have six to take, and in five more years, they would have six more to take.
Right, to maintain their certificate.
Okay, and that would not, and how many credits would they need for a doctorate?
If they have a master's degree, it's usually about 60.
Okay.
So Eric, just to clarify, right now, the amount in there is $60,000, and Mrs. Harshman is asking consideration of a third, a reduction of a third of that? Is that accurate?
I mean, it's hard to correlate it, like everyone's explained, it doesn't really, doesn't work that way.
Is there interest in pursuing the reduction of the tuition reimbursement to ANS? Okay, that is off. I have one more, and then we'll go to, and I think, Mrs. Harshman, this was yours, your question on miscellaneous savings, the reduction in professional development, supplies, food and meals. Was there a question involved in that? That was a reduction of 26,000, and I believe that...
Yeah, I was wondering for whom that was, and I was told it was for the teachers, and I don't, I don't know if, yes, and I don't know if that's, if that's a needed reduction, I mean...
It was to meet what is being spent, it's to match actuals.
Okay, then that was just basically a question to find out.
Okay. I think that takes us, then, to the fund balance question that Dr. Harding's put forward, where we would take, I had 5.7 million revenue from fund balance, is that a correct amount? And then we would add that to the revenue line and also to the expense line, capital outlay. That doesn't, I guess my question is, that doesn't include the penalties?
Yes, it does.
No, the 5.7 is the payoff amount.
The 5.2.
So that's why I want to be sure.
My intention was to include the amount for the, to include the payoff amount, and then...
The yearly pay.
The yearly lease amount may or may not cover any penalties or extra costs. If it doesn't, it's going to be close, and if, you know, if the board needs to pull more from fund balance at that point or not, then it can do so. But it certainly sets aside the money to pay off the lease.
So the question, then, is 5.7 million, any questions on what we're looking? Any questions on what we're looking at here? Yes, Mrs. Williams?
You're going to add that to the revenue line?
Revenue line and expensive lines, expense line, capital outlay.
Capital outlay. Thank you. Are you looking for a nod?
I'm, I'm looking for, oops, we have a question, a frown here, so we'll take the frown.
I mean, this is, has just now been brought up today. It's the first time we've thought about this.
Well, I would disagree a little bit. We've talked about being able to pay off ever since we started the, the bond for BISFA. We always knew at the 10-year mark, there was an opportunity to pay. It's a different board, but we knew there would be an opportunity to do this at the beginning of the project. So I'm sorry.
And our overall goal in doing this is to save money.
Dr. Hardings?
My goal is to save money over the next 10 years.
Yeah.
Because we don't have to pay all the interest.
Do we have any idea how much we'd be saving over those 10 years?
Well, just 10 years' worth of lease payments is 6.34 mil, $6.34 million over 10 years. If we paid it off early, it'd be six, almost $7 million we'd pay over the next 10 years.
Paying a penalty.
If we pay it off now.
That takes.
That takes only one year, and then it's clear.
But that five minutes, it's not, we're not saving the total payment every year by paying 5.7 million now. We're, I mean, the five, whatever, the 637, all right, I'll ask it this way, experts, what are we saving by doing this in the long run?
In the long run, you're saving, essentially saving the difference between the one percent, roughly 1% that we're getting on investing the fund balance cash versus the little over 4% that you're paying on the note. So essentially, you're, you've got about a little more than a 3% spread there that you're going to save on roughly starting out at about $5.5 million. Obviously, the balance is obviously declining, but as, as you move through the payments. But that's, that's essentially the difference that you're saving, is that little bit over 3% per year.
And you're still going to take a second vote to actually expend this money? This is just putting in the revenue line.
It stays, it stays.
I just hate lowering the fund balance that far in case of an emergency. That's my bottom line.
For case of emergencies?
Yes.
Well, have we ever used the fund balance for an emergency? Have we ever had the full amount needed to get us through 45 days of emergency? Has that ever accumulated in that fund balance? I mean, it may be the intent of, of the fund balance, but.
Well, I didn't mean just not getting any money from the commissioners and the state on our, the periodic basis and having to make up for it. I'm talking about what if the building collapses tomorrow?
Then we have to go to the commissioners.
Exactly. Our commissioners are saying they don't have any money.
Well, I'm saying, if you have something that.
They have a balance for that, don't they? A fund balance that they back us up with for emergency?
Will they?
Yes, they do. Well, that's my understanding.
They're, under God, they're going to do that.
Dr. Hardings?
They have that.
They won't replace a roof now.
We, we did use the fund balance after the fire at, at Antietam Academy.
Absolutely. Which fund balance? Ours or theirs?
Ours.
Ours. Oh, we had some. Did we ask them? Well, we had some. So we haven't had that situation come up.
The question before us, knowing this, I'm sorry.
I mean, this is, this is the basic question. I mean, it's, it's the political question that we're being asked to answer, right? The commissioners don't seem to like the size of our fund balance. I think there's some members here, I'm, myself included, who believe that there's good reason for a system of our size with our budget to have a fund balance. So we have to decide if we're going to keep one or if we are not. I think based on the quarterly budget adjustments this year, the board seems to be saying, we're not going to add to the fund balance, because we haven't. The staff seems to be recommending not adding to the fund balance. And the question is, if we're going to spend down the fund balance, how best do you do it? And I can think of no better way than on the Barbara Ingram school, because it saves us money down the road and ends the obligation that the board took on 10 years ago. So that's my thinking. But, but you're right, Mrs. Fisher. I mean, it's fundamentally a political question, is, should we keep a fund balance? If so, how much? And what are the consequences, then, for our relationships with each other, with the commissioners, and our ability to do other kinds of things we'd like to do?
And it does free up that capital outlay, the 634.
That's actually operating money.
Operating money. Yep. It is operating money.
True.
And it fits our policy. It's a one-time use of one, one-time, non-recurring dollars.
Right. Realize.
All right. I, I need some, some heads nodding in affirmative.
Affirmative to spend it. I mean, to move it.
To move fund balance 5.7 million into revenue and capital outlay.
Yes.
All right. We're there. All right. That brings me to the end of my list. Did anyone else capture something that I missed? Staff?
Madam President, staff does have a question, and that is where the board would like us to take the money for the guidance counselor, the APs, and that sort of thing that you've added.
Because we really haven't cut enough, have we? So in the couple cuts we've made, I guess the question for staff would be, because they are going to need to clean this up before the evening meeting.
We're going to need slightly over 244,000.
Need to find that, 244 is where we are at this point.
Well, we've cut, I've, now, you've already, I'm obvious, obviously, we've already figured this in. We cut one staff position that had been put in there. We've cut the 20,000 from the fresh drink. I'm not sure what else we've cut. So that takes up part of that difference. I suggest the rest comes from the pools, the only thing left.
240, we're calculating 244, but we, we did not calculate in a cut of a staff position.
Well, I started to say the HR is a replacement and actually a savings for the diversity position, correct?
Actually, no, because the, the HR position that was eliminated, that, if, if you look on.
Okay, it's the other way.
Page two of two, the, the first section, savings from active positions, the fourth item down, eliminate three administrative positions with benefits. The HR position that was eliminated is one of those three. So it's already in the budget.
Already in.
So if we don't, if we, if we keep the coordinator position, we do need to keep those dollars in the budget.
Understood. But the other position, let me remember.
So, the achievement person was 100 and what, 3,000? 105,000?
The achievement is 127.
So 127 plus the 25, or the 20 for chocolate milk is 140?
We've already taken into account the 20 when we need the 244. So.
And have the chocolate milk in here? Why did we talk about it, then?
Well, it was on the list.
It was in here. Just, all we're saying is, the amount we're saying we still need, the 244, takes into account the consensus to take that 20,000 out.
Okay, but does it take the 127,000 out?
No.
So it's less than 100,000 or about 100,000 that we still need to get? Is that correct?
Yeah. If there's consensus to move the director position out.
Well, there was. They've already said that.
Correct.
Oh, I'm sorry. I had that still in. I'm sorry.
So now we just need 140,000?
If we put our heads together, we can find $100,000.
So do we need a designated location, colleagues, or should we leave it to staff to find that? Staff, those who would like staff to find it, please acknowledge. Those that would like to see it come out of the pool? I'm getting nothing.
I'm fine with coming out of the pool. I'm fine with coming out of a couple of different places. I'll wait, I mean, I could.
Not out of the pool.
Recommendation from staff.
Do you have enough balances by 6 o'clock?
Yeah, we, we can reduce another line somewhere. We'll find, we'll find $100,000.
Okay.
And we'll come back, and then you can decide if it's the appropriate place.
They will bring us a balanced budget.
We'll, we'll bring you a balanced budget with several options to get to that last $100,000.
Perfect. At 6 o'clock, we'll have a balance. All right.
Maybe 6:05.
6:05, 6:07.
Right after the flesh.
It's not the first thing on the budget, right?
No. So you have a little extra time. All right. With that, appreciate the conversation, and we go into closed session at 3:30. Okay.